Call to the order. Karen, can you please start with the roll call?
President Abbas?
Present.
Vice President Martin?
Here.
Alder Lemmer?
Here.
Alder Bennett? Aldo Haley?
Here.
Aldo Heck?
Here.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
How's that?
Aldo Carter?
President.
You have Quorum.
Thank you very much. Can we ID their announcement, please?
Thank you. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is Alders and staff, have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Panelists can also rename themselves if they wish to add pronouns after their name. Please do not alter the naming convention otherwise. Also, please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public have registered to speak. The name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the body, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe. Next is approval of the minute. Can we please have a motion?
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion on the approval of the minute? I do not see any hand raised, so I will consider as minimally passed. Next is public comments. Let's refresh my list. I can only see an agenda number five, public comments, but I don't see any other. Karen, that's right. Correct. Moving forward, disclosures and recusal. Please raise your hand if you have any disclosure or refusal. I do not see any hand raised, so thank you very much. We will move to agenda item number two, file number 6578 for COVID-19 update. Janelle?
Hi, good evening. I think I can share my screen. Okay, do you see my PowerPoint? I did it right the first time? Oh, my gosh. I should be getting, being able to do that. All right. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to give you kind of a bit of a retrospective, a current state, and a little bit of future casting about our COVID response. So since March 13th of 2020, we issued 18 orders plus three amendments to those orders, the last of which expired last Tuesday, June 2nd at 12:01 a.m., Wednesday morning. Just a reminder why we had those orders were to... Oh, my goodness. I bumped the screen. Sorry. Let me try that again. Well, that's a first. Okay, I think we're back. You got it? Okay, thank you. We went through the process of having the policy interventions to protect our healthcare systems and our public health systems and their ability to care for everyone with COVID and for folks who needed care in the healthcare system outside of COVID. So we did a great job at that here in Dane County. We saved lives. We had a very low rate of death compared to our population base, which is really great. And now we're in a wonderful place with lower case activity and increasing vaccine coverage. And so, as I always like to do, talk about the response by the numbers with some data to throw at you. So just a reminder, we started organizing our COVID response in January of 2020 before the first case arrived, was diagnosed in Dane County. We started that response with pulling 10 folks of our regular staff of 160 into a COVID response structure. Over the course of the pandemic, we were fortunate to be able to hire additional staff and contract, limited term and contractual staff to support the response and had a high of about 350 folks working for PHMDC in December. And we're now down to a little bit under 300 as we're transitioning to new phases of the response. So cornerstones of the response that have been very public and, you know, just really instrumental in helping us be as successful as we have been as a community include testing at the Alliant Energy Center. Since the beginning, which was about March, May 13-ish last year, there have been 426,445 tests conducted at the Alliant Energy Center and an additional 12,793 at our South Madison site. And then even more when you add in pop-up testing that we did, which helped us have a really great pulse on the state of COVID in our community. We know that there have been, actually, I think that number's a little bit higher, almost 45,000 people have tested positive for COVID in Dane County since the beginning of the response, which turns into a lot of folks that we needed to contact trace, investigate their disease status, and follow up with their contacts. So in sum, we contacted almost all of those folks with confirmed and probable diagnoses and then did an additional 48,000 and change of investigations of contacting folks' contacts and with the goal of making sure that we could prevent further spread of illness. So almost 100,000 people were directly contacted by public health related to their COVID status in the last year and a bit. And in addition to that, we've provided support to nearly 1,800 facility investigations. So when we know that there's a cluster of disease at any type of organization, we've provided some additional support there to make sure that we can support them in getting their arms wrapped around it and preventing further spread in addition to the individual contact tracing that we do. The Alliant's also been an incredible site to be able to have as a mass vaccine clinic, allowing us to be one of the providers to get as many shots in arms as quickly as possible in Dane County. As of June 3rd, we administered almost 81,000 doses at Alliant. I don't have the total number of mobile clinics, but I think it's probably over 1,000 there, and that number is just going to continue to go up in the near future. And as a result of all of this, here's where we are. Our seven-day average has fallen significantly since our peak. So in November, December, our seven-day average was 488 people being diagnosed per day. As of yesterday, it was seven. So really incredible progress and just a testament to all the things that have been working together in this community and the work of the community to support those interventions to get us to be where we are today. Just another way of showing is as vaccination has gone up, cases have significantly gone down. And so our percent of the population, the total eligible population with at least one dose of vaccine is 77% right now. We are leading the way in Dane County or in the state of Wisconsin still. Not quite number one nationwide, but pretty close still. And as a result, we're seeing hospitalizations fivefold less than they were in late fall. And as of today, you know, there are still 23 people hospitalized. And just a reminder to us that while we are probably through the worst of it, this is still a pretty severe disease that we want to make sure that we can prevent the spread of and for people having severe illness to the greatest extent possible. Another way to look at our COVID vaccine data, just kind of look at that scale and the pace with which we have progressed. On April 6th, we had 43% of the population with one dose, 60% on May 3rd, and 67% on June 8th. That number is slowing down as we anticipated it would. And I'll talk a little bit more. And we are seeing racial disparities amongst racial and ethnic populations and a little bit of a difference in rural communities as well. So we're doing a lot of work to address and support that. But great news is that our coverage as a community is continuing to go up. And just in comparison to where we are amongst the state, so we continue to lead the way in one-dose and completed series. And this number, if you followed our snapshots, there was a time when we thought at the pace when things were going in administering doses at that rapid pace that we could achieve that 80% in mid-May. And as that pace has a vaccine administration on a daily basis has slowed down, the projection of when we could achieve that 80% of the eligible population has continued to be pushed out. So right now, we are at 77% of Dane County, who are folks who are 12 and older have received at least one dose. And we think at this current pace, we could achieve that 80% by June 29th. So looking ahead, we know that we will be vacating the Alliant Energy Center. June 26th will be the last day of providing services there. It does not mean it's the last day that we are providing testing or vaccination services. So just some additional data. There were about 48,000 fewer tests last month at Alliant than at the peak in October. And just last week, I think we only had 1,300 folks come through for tests at Alliant. So those numbers are really dropping off, which is what we would want them to do given the coverage that we have around vaccine in this community and the low levels of activity. Just want to make sure that even though we're having low numbers of folks come through here, we still have enough testing resources available in Dane County to assure that we are keeping the pulse on COVID activity. So there's more testing that's happening than just at the Alliant, and we feel very confident that the 0.8% positivity is really representative of what's happening in our community given all the testing that's happening. So starting June 29th, we're going to be transitioning testing out of the Alliant Energy Center and into our South Madison office. And here's the dates and times for that. And then we're working, one of the things that the state is supporting and we are coordinating here in Dane County is making sure that as many of our local pharmacies have access to the state testing framework to make sure that testing is more geographically accessible. We understand that that may not be perfect, and so we're continuing to make sure that there's a comprehensive approach should we need it, whether that's at a pop-up or, you know, just different accessible sites. The same thing we're doing for vaccination. So as I said before, the Alliant really has served an incredible, is an incredible resource to support getting as many people through there as quickly as possible to get our rates up. But we know that it is, we've always known that it wouldn't be the only way that we would deliver vaccine services. So we are, have been picking up the pace of transitioning to mobile kind of pop-up clinics over the last six weeks at a higher intensity than earlier on. And we'll also be making vaccine available at our permanent locations on East Wash and the South Madison on Park Street as well. So and really working on engaging with community stakeholders to support education and outreach across the community, across all of Dane County. So in the next seven days, we are going to be holding a number, starting, I guess, starting yesterday or today. We have at least seven to 12 clinics planned. Some of those are first-dose clinics. Some of those are second. Here's a little sample of where we'll be more specifically than what you can see on that map. And we are also working to make sure that we are standing up regular vaccine clinics at some of the shelters and the beacon on an ongoing basis over the course of the summer. So I'd love it. If you haven't already, please follow us on social media and share mobile clinic posts if you find some in your community. If we are going to be hosting a clinic in your jurisdiction, we will make sure that we contact you and ask you to share our information through your networks. And always are welcome to please contact us if you have more questions or ideas or want to make some connections to different stakeholders to support making vaccine accessible. I don't know if you had a chance to see our videos. I was going to play those briefly, if you don't mind. Make sure they pop up on the right screen.
We have come a long way, Dane County.
Do you see the video? Yes, okay.
To the first vaccine. Nothing about the COVID-19 pandemic has been easy, but with your help, we are fighting that.
Our county is getting vaccinated.
Our county is masking up.
We can hear it but not see it, Janelle.
Cases drop. We can't stop now.
Well.
I think I have to share a different program then. Sorry about that. Let me start here. Okay, can you see it now? Sorry about that.
We have come a long way, Dane County. From the first case
to the first vaccine. Nothing about the COVID-19 pandemic has been easy, but with your help, we are fighting that.
Our county is getting vaccinated.
Our county is masking up.
Our county is seeing cases drop. We can't stop now. Now is not the time to lose sight of our why. For me.
For you.
For us. Let's bring it home, Dane County. Get the vaccine.
So that's one. And if you indulge me, I'll play the other one as well.
Fighting's not that easy. Grammarly can help. This sentence is grammatically correct, but it's wordy and hard to escape.
So happy that kind of wraps everything up. Happy to have a conversation, answer your questions, and make sure that you have access to these videos to share these with your networks to support vaccine education and promotion.
Thank you very much, Janelle. Any questions? Aldo Heck?
Thank you, President Abbas. Janelle, you always exhibited tremendous composure since the beginning of the pandemic, but you seem slightly more relaxed. Thank you. Question, if, you know, you mentioned that testing capabilities will be somewhat relied upon in private partners like pharmacies and things. Can we still point people to public health Facebook pages or website and things in order to get information about where those testing locations are?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for the question. I went really quickly because I knew I had a lot of slides and you probably have some questions for me, so I apologize for that. We are going to be continuing to maintaining as many resources on the website and engage with the community as possible. I will say hopefully it'll be probably not as different as what you've seen so far through the pandemic. So we'll have that information available. We'll be providing testing, and then we'll make sure that folks know where else that they can get it done besides healthcare.
Thank you.
Yes, I feel a little bit more relaxed finally.
Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you very much, Aldo Heck, Aldo Beale.
Thanks, President Abbas. Thank you, Janelle, for this profound presentation. You've shared, you know, the testing vaccines and all the, you know, the updates. But I'm just curious as the number of deaths in Dane County. I don't know if you have shared that information. I'm just curious as to how many lives we have lost so far.
Unfortunately, we posted, I believe, one new death today. We are at, I'm pulling up my screen to make sure that I have the number accurate, 311 Dane County residents who've died from COVID so far.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Beale, Aldo Carter.
Yeah, thank you, Janelle. My question is, regardless of where your pop-ups are going to be, can you send that information out so we can send it to our constituents who might have friends, relatives that live in other districts? That they can inform them? And then how soon can we post the two videos? Because I thought they were tremendously great. Although I was not in any of them, as you know. I could have won an Academy Award. But never mind that, they were still good.
There may be opportunities in the future, Aldo Carter. So let's, thank you for that. Absolutely, please take them and post. They are out and live. We would love for you to use them. And yes, I will make sure that if you haven't, we will get you the list and the link so you can share that. And I appreciate you thinking, you know, it's not just everyone in Madison. It's everyone, all their friends and family to support getting vaccinated. So thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Carter. Vice President Martin?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is maybe for you or for the council. First of all, thank you so much, Janelle, for all of the hard work that you've done this past year plus, everything that your team has done. You know, I'm very appreciative, and I know that others are as well. And along the lines of Aldo Carter's question, we get this information added to our, the weekly updates that Debbie puts out so that we can make sure that they're, just so they're in one place as well. I think that might be a good idea. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great suggestion, and Google made me love that. Quick question for me. Janelle, thank you. I will echo exactly what my colleague said about your great work and getting there really tough time and especially your commitment to keeping all of us safe and outreach effort, if I spoke. I'm just curious about those mobile clinics. When you decide, I know there was a two or three mobile clinic happening on our side. I'm just curious from a public health point of view, when you create those mobile clinic, what data do you see? Either those are more like data-driven or...
I'm sorry, you broke up. What, I'm sorry.
I'm, what I'm saying is when you decide to have those mobile clinic in different places, let's say north side, we have three of them, right? So is it data-driven? Like these areas need more or these areas are already at a good percentage? And if it's data-driven, I'm just curious if by either north, east, southwest, if you have more information where we are as per area-wise?
Yes, so we are absolutely data-driven. We regularly look at vaccine coverage by census tract. We're engaging with different community stakeholders in all the areas where we're identifying perhaps lower uptake of vaccine. And then that's what supports where we start hosting clinics. And just because you might not see any right in the next week in a certain community doesn't mean that they're not going to be in the near future. So we're kind of posting those one to two weeks in advance because we're also finalizing the confirmation of the scheduling at the same time and doing all that background work to make sure that all the steps are in place and the facility is ready to go and there is a community leader, stakeholder who is supportive of having a vaccine clinic in that area to help with promotion, education, and outreach as well. So definitely data-driven and also, you know, community-informed and to the greatest extent that we can. And we recognize that we're always in areas of improvement there, but really wanting to make it as welcoming and inclusive as possible when we hold those mobile clinics.
Thank you very much. Last question is about hesitancy, vaccination hesitancy. There are communities, and I know in my own community, there are people who are not opposed to vaccination, but there is a hesitation. And I work with that community as well, try to advocate for vaccination and protection. I'm curious, those communities where you have challenges, what strategies you guys are using to address hesitancy of vaccination?
Well, a few that I've already spoken to a little bit, but I can add some more detail. I mean, what, if you were to say, "Public health, would you come and work with my community?" We would want to be there with a community, trusted, known community partner or leader so that it creates that engagement by that. If folks don't know and they haven't had as much experience with us, they might have experience with other folks that are inviting us in. We try to go through kind of a multi-step process where we would do education and outreach first in a community. We have a team, a community engagement team that is going out and flyer-ing, paper-ing, talking to folks, engaging with different business owners or organizations where we might be holding that, identifying whether or not we want to have a community conversation. And then on the day of the clinic, doing a bit more of that and making sure that we have folks who are at the clinic providing that one-on-one touch with folks to support, you know, walk through and talk through that hesitancy that they may still be having. So we try to take a multi-factor approach to that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the work. Thank you. Aldo McKinney?
Thank you very much. And I did owe everything that's been said. My question was around the mobile clinic as well and location and scheduling. And so it's been asked and answered. And so if there is additional... And so if there is additional information, should we just contact you directly about the possibility of scheduling or setting up or where a certain area is in the lineup?
Yes, please. You can contact me and I will probably connect you to our team leads there. But absolutely, please get in touch and let us know if you have a place, a partner, you want to be that lead. We are happy to support making vaccine as accessible as possible because that's really going to be the next big push that we've always known. So yes, please.
Okay.
And I do think tonight, or tomorrow night, we're at Meadow Ridge Library, just enough way.
Excellent. So my final question is that when a site is selected, like Meadowwood is selected, is there flyer? How is the community informed of the pop-up site? What is that? Is there a process that goes through to inform the individuals of Meadowwood that there's going to be a pop-up site there?
Yeah, yes. Thank you for the question. So yes, we try to, I know that's not your jurisdiction. It's your neighboring jurisdiction, but we would contact, one, the Alder supervisor that the clinic is in. We work with the community partner, with the community partner who's supporting the hosting of that clinic and we, to get information out. And we also send out a small team of, we're calling them the CET, the Community Engagement Team, to be a bit more, you know, boots on the ground, walking around and doing some additional notification in the community. But we also push things out through all of our listservs because we know that it doesn't have to just draw from folks who live in that immediate space.
Thank you very much, Aldo McKinney. Aldo, your hand was raised. Do you want to speak?
No, thank you. Accidentally raised my hand.
No worries. Any further question for Janelle? I do not see any hand raised. Thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate that.
Thank you, and thank you for all the support and continuing to message out to the community. It's been incredibly helpful. Appreciate it.
Moving forward, next is agenda item number three, file number 65837, Restoring In-Person Services. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, President Abbas. I appreciate the chance to give you guys an update here and get your input and answer questions if I can. Given the good news that we just heard from Janelle, we have been working to bring back more in-person services here at the city. And, you know, every conversation I have about this has to start with acknowledging that somewhere between 50% and 60% of our employees never stopped delivering in-person services. And I mean, you all know what departments we're talking about, right? Certainly our fire department, our police department, but also streets. You know, fleet didn't stop working on vehicles. You know, there's been a lot of in-person work. The clerk's office has been in-person really the whole time. The treasurer has for most of the time as well. So there's been a substantial portion of our city staff who have been onsite delivering in-person service to our community throughout the entire pandemic. And I am incredibly grateful to them for the work that they've done and for the way that they've transitioned their work to keep themselves, each other and the public safe during the pandemic. But nonetheless, we did have between 40% and 50% of our staff that were teleworking, at least partly, for the past year plus. And many in-person services particularly walk up desks or counters that have been closed. So we are starting to ease back in. Obviously, you all know that the libraries are now open for most of their in-person services again and soon to be all. The clerk's office is essentially open, as is the treasurer. But we will start to have more and more of that walk-up counter available to the public for the whole range of services that they provide. I just, I do want to just give you a few details on sort of how we have been thinking about this and what to expect. We are being very careful to frame the discussion as about restoring in-person service to acknowledge that there have been folks all along doing this and are somewhat around return to office. Because it's not a return to work, right? Everybody's been working this whole time. And we are trying to be very deliberate and to engage employees in this conversation about how best to do it. We are trying to keep the city website up to date on what services are available, how. So that continues to be a good resource. And I will try and regularly share that information at my briefings to make sure that we're keeping people abreast of what's available to them. Throughout this entire process, we've been trying to center equity and the ResJ team developed last year a really solid set of COVID equity questions that we have been using in the EOC and, sorry, the Emergency Operations Center, but also in the funding and recovery teams to, you know, as we're thinking about the response, but also recovery planning and restoring services. We also have been trying to regularly at management team meetings. And for new Alders, I meet every other week with the agency heads in management team. And at those meetings, we have really emphasized how our agency heads, department and division heads can integrate equity into our response to COVID and our return to work. We've talked about how to show appreciation for staff effectively. We've talked about how to gather input on the decisions that need to be made about the specifics of this process that will be different in each agency. We've talked about gathering input from the public on how the services have been going through the pandemic, focused on using those COVID equity questions and also on the equity analysis tools and then how to rely on also the department equity teams to inform all of this. So there's been some good, I think, robust conversation all along the way. And I'm frankly pretty proud of how city staff have handled all of this and continue to be really amazed by how hard they're working. We do have a number of information pages that are on our internal employee net around public health updates, services and resources, policies and procedures, and then an FAQ that are available for staff on a whole range of things, including teleworking and masking policy and flexible schedules and sort of on down the line. Where can you get vaccinated? Where can you get tested? You know, all of these things. IT did incredible work transitioning us to telework and supporting folks in teleworking throughout the entire pandemic. And now we'll be asking them to help us wind down some of that teleworking as well. But I'm totally confident that they will be there for us in that process. And then we had a section of the Emergency Operations Center that is specifically focused on planning. And they prepared a facilities guidance last year which has helped us prepare our buildings for a return to office. For example, there's some HVAC modifications and sharing of information. They did a tremendous amount of work when we had the restrictions around social distancing and masking to post those and to make people aware of them. And now they'll be doing more work around, you know, an updated set of guidance in terms of signage and direction to people in terms of keeping people safe. Also, you know, we looked at all of our cleaning and sanitizing and did a really tremendous amount of work to get out supplies, including cleaning supplies, hand sanitizer and masks to each agency. And we'll continue to do that. We have a lot of masks. And we'll continue to make those available to employees and to the public that come in to our facilities if they want to use them. We also did a lot of asking employees for input through several surveys. One was about teleworking and childcare. That was last year. One was just a status. We surveyed management team on status of different services, how they were being delivered. We also surveyed management team on how we can support them in this process, got some really good feedback. And then we did survey all employees on vaccination status. And we did this anonymously so people would feel comfortable sharing that information. The last time I checked, we had about a two-thirds response. And we had 91% of our employees fully vaccinated, which is, I think, incredibly good news. And hopefully that number will only go up because we had a number of people in the other 9% say that they had their first shot or they were scheduling their first shot. So hopefully that number will just go up from there. We also have had a great team working on policies this whole time, both around HR and IT. And in particular, we have two new APMs. We updated the teleworking APM and I am just today, hopefully I will finish reading it after this meeting, hoping to approve our new flexible scheduling policy. I think this is really, really important, these two in particular. So for those of you who are new or maybe aren't, haven't been through the policy or APM development process before, we did use the racial equity analysis tools in the development process for these APMs. And we take them out to get feedback from employees and from management team before we finalize them. But I think these two are really important. It's obviously clear through the pandemic that teleworking is going to be a bigger part of all of our lives now and that both teleworking and a more flexible schedule approach are effective. I think that these two things are going to be key to our ability as an employer to attract employees into the future. And so it's something that I've been really emphasizing is that our managers and supervisors really take a close look at their assumptions around what's needed and that they really work with employees that want to set up a telework agreement or a flexible schedule and really try and accommodate that, particularly for folks who are in the position of being caregivers. Because that's been something that's been really difficult over the course of the pandemic, obviously. And we want to try and accommodate that and retain folks that are in that position rather than losing them to an employer that might have a more flexible approach. So we are really leaning in on that. And then throughout all of this, we've been trying to communicate out. I believe you all get the emails that go to all email users. There's also obviously emails that go to management team. And so we've been trying to do a good job of making sure that people get the information, you know, sort of broadly, but then that managers and supervisors are reinforcing that through additional communication within the different agencies. So speaking of that communication, the most recent, which I'm sure you all saw, but just to hit the top lines, we are changing our mask policy. So starting June 14th, we will be recommending that anyone who is unvaccinated or who has any other health concerns or wants to should wear a mask, but that we will not be requiring masks in city facilities. We will still make them available, as I said. And we're asking staff to do their best to mirror the behavior of the customers as they come in or residents as they come in. So if that person is masked, that the city staff person would put a mask on to, to up the comfort level. And to just generally be supportive of people masking if they want to. I will note that because the city-county building is the city-county building, that the county policy will hold in common areas in CCB. And so masks will be required through July 6th and then for anyone who is unvaccinated after July 6th. So as you come back in to the building, when you're ready to do that, just please note that in the common areas, even if our policy is different, we need to mask up. And then just to sort of preview for you, we are working on reopening more of the city buildings. Obviously, library is already there. We are working on a partial opening of the city-county building for some floors and still working on that with the county. And then looking to open the municipal building. I think all of this is in a matter of weeks, but not fully nailed down yet. And then other agencies that have some sort of public-facing, again, like a walk-up counter, whether that's the streets where you can go to buy a sticker or the, you know, fire stations, police stations, that kind of thing. Those will all start to open up in that same timeframe of, I would say, weeks to a month-ish. And we'll be announcing each of those as they're ready. We're really just giving departments time to make sure that folks are ready to be back servicing those counters and that they have the staffing that they need. So I think that is most of what I wanted to say. I will say that, you know, we do continue to hear from agencies about the need for, you know, support and resources throughout all of this, particularly, I will say, communications resources have been in short supply. So that continues to be a place that I think we collectively need to pay some attention. And also, you know, trying to make sure that we have good resources in terms of language access, which is less of a concern internally, but definitely a concern with external messaging. But I do want to, I think Kara is still here. I do want to give Kara a chance. She is, so for those of you who don't know, Kara Kradowitz, our performance excellence specialist, has been a real leader in this planning process of restoring in-person service and has been really thinking about how we center our employees throughout all of this. So Kara, if you please add anything I missed. And then I know you want to talk a little bit about how we are centering and taking care of our employees in this process.
Happy to do so, Mayor. Thank you. And for those of you who I haven't had the pleasure of working with yet, I've been with the city for almost six years now and between finance and HR and supporting the mayor. And I would like to just add that in addition to the EOC planning section, while I pull up my presentation, the Government Services Recovery Team, which exists in parallel to the Emergency Operations Center as a structured, focused on recovery, has really been integral in supporting the efforts that Mayor spoke to today. So I just want to cover a few slides here on how we're in supporting employees and really what we've been doing is really communicating this through the management team and then rolling out information through citywide communications. As we talk about our approach to safely restoring in-person services, we've been doing this in sort of a tiered discussion where we talk first about the emotional safety of our employees, which is the absence or harm. where we talk first about the emotional safety of our employees, which is the absence or harm of threat to the mental wellbeing of our staff. In addition to the emotional, we have the really personal safety, which is the individual recognition and their avoidance of possible harmful situations in their surroundings. And in addition to that, we have the environmental safety. Some people kind of liken this to Maslow's hierarchy of needs because those laws, rules, regulations and policies and processes that we are also familiar with in the government setting really are there to help support the individual who's working in the city and their wellbeing as they come into the workplace. So just a couple of examples of when we talk about these different approaches to safety. When we come to it at emotional stage, we really have our employee assistance program, who has done a tremendous job of rounding up a series of resources, not just by providing monthly newsletters, but proactively reinforcing their services to staff across the city that that is accessible and for them to use at their discretion. And they've also gone through and, you know, called many different resources, such as the National Alliance, NAMI, and pulling together lots of resources that city staff and their families can use that are freely accessible and have provided that to staff. We've also worked with EAP from organizational development to create a building resiliency series that will be launched in July and August and provided on a routine basis to support staff who are concerned about their own wellbeing as they come back into the workplace or continue to provide in-person service delivery and may still have concerns for their safety. In addition, we're working on a conversation guide for Team City for how do we reset our norms? This is a tremendous opportunity, Mayor says this a lot, to not hold on to the status quo ways we've always done things, but start having real conversations about ground rules that we want to set for ourselves and expectations for how we will treat one another as we build back in a post pandemic future. On the personal safety side, EAP again has done a tremendous job of issuing a supervisor employee guide for how we can think about working through these COVID times and towards the post pandemic future and the types of conversations supervisors could be having with their employees to support their wellbeing. We've also from organizational development and organizing these customer service conversations that will launch in July and August as well, again, to support reopening, which will feature staff who have provided customer service throughout the pandemic in a panel oriented conversation that is really meant to help build lessons learned from those who've been doing this well throughout the pandemic, but then allowing staff who are newly coming back into the workplace, ask questions. And those will be both provided on an internal facing sort of customer service and those who provide external facing customer service to the public. In addition, as Mayor mentioned, she's supporting telework and flex scheduling where possible to help ensure the personal safety of our staff is maintained, ongoing, even as we move into a post pandemic future. And then on the environmental safety side, we've really listened a lot to what the staff are asking about in the facilities realm, such as those HVAC modifications, what are our cleaning procedures and really gotten together those frequently asked questions organized to be staff to answer them and have building point of contact for each agency who can answer those questions for staff as they come back into the office. Service desk modifications are some of the other changes, along with the masking guidance that Mayor had mentioned. And sort of in an overall support context, in addition to our website being routinely updated on employee net and the public facing side of things. We've also launched this year a program called Teams to Be Change Leadership, which monthly brings together top leaders across the organization to teach them change management skills. And the feedback I've been receiving from folks is that it's really helping to encourage our leaders to be good listeners to their staff, meeting folks where they are and helping them learn the skills to move through the change journey as we are continuously moving through bouts of change, no matter what agency we're working on, in addition to all of the changes happening related to COVID. And the last thing I'll leave you with is just that while, while our reality is really the, the employees think about emotional safety for themselves, particularly those who have not been in the office, are really concerned about how they stay safe in, in their own personal wellbeing and within the environment. But as a staff, we really can't impact the emotional and personal safety as much as we can create the policies and procedures to support the environment. And so we just like to acknowledge there's a slight disconnect there between what our employees' needs may be from the individual level and what systematically we can provide at a macro solutions level. But we're doing our best to try to promote support at all three levels of safety within the organization.
Thank you, Kara. I think that's, that's very well said. So that's a lot from us. Happy to take questions if you have them. I will say, if you haven't been in the building in a while, you will see differences at front desks. Everybody has Plexiglas now. And, and perhaps some other changes as well, but I think we are, are starting to be ready to start to ease back in and, and you'll see that over the coming weeks and months.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for the presentation. Alder Carter.
Yes, just a quick question. Are each division heads, supervisors, et cetera, holding one-on-one with staff to find out where their comfort is as far as coming back or even flex time?
Effectively, yes. So under the new telework and soon to be new flex scheduling policy, any employee can request a telework agreement or a flexible scheduling policy. And, and they would sit down and work it out with their supervisor. We're also rolling out our regular one-on-one check-ins so that each employee will have a one-on-one check-in with their supervisor. But what each, at the agency level, what, what each of them are doing is communicating out. And I just saw from traffic engineering today, sort of what the expectation is. And just for example, traffic engineering was saying, you know, use this time between now and when the building opens. Just, just test it out. Come in for a few hours. See what you think. See how you feel. See what you might want to request as a telework agreement. And then let us know what you want. And there, we're really trying to have the decisions be made sort of as close to the work as possible. Because I don't know, just to continue with that example, what makes sense for Yang's people in terms of, do they need to be in, you know, two days a week, three days a week, one day a week, one week a month? I don't, I don't, I'm not going to make that decision. I want them to make it together about what makes the most sense for the work and the people. So yeah, we're really trying to be driven by, you know, how do we make sure we're delivering the services that we need to deliver? And then how do we make sure that staff are really comfortable and can request the schedules that they, that they need?
Thank you.
Any further questions? I do not see any hand raised. So thank you very much for your detailed presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Next is, and if we haven't covered that, and we can go next agenda item number four, file number 65785, management team updates.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly give you, I know that I've talked about this with the last council, but I wanted for the new Alders and, and to go into a little more depth for everyone to talk about our executive check-in process and highlight some changes in management team and some upcoming opportunities for feedback. So we started, I honestly have lost track of how long ago now. Slightly pre pandemic at least. A process of doing annual executive check-ins between myself and all of the Comp Group 21 managers. So Comp Group 21 managers are your agency heads, your department, your division heads. And we have really sort of refined this process. So it's a, it's a long, we, we schedule an hour and a half for each of them. Happen, it will happen ideally once a year with each agency head. So each of them will get a concerted amount of time. And the idea is not to talk about the day-to-day work or work plan, but rather to, to step back and take a big look at how is the agency performing and then how is the, the director performing? And so we cover a bunch of stuff. I wanted to just quickly show you some examples. So we, we cover their budget. Can you, oh, not yet. There we go. So you, you see the budget memo for the executive check-in. This is just an example. It was from Metro. You know, we talk about the fiscal year, were they at or over or under budget? How do you explain that? Are there significant changes looking at the next budget? What are we looking at in terms of changes? Have they been implemented? Are there issues? And then like, what's the trend? And so depending on when the meeting is, they would fill out a different section because we would either be asking them like, what do you look, what do you expect? Where are you currently at? Or, you know, what's your, your fourth quarter? Or your third quarter? So that's just a sense of what we look at on the budget. And then on demographics is the other big thing that we look at. And so this is about, there's this example from the clerk's office. This is really looking at their staffing, right? So here is the, the breakdown citywide. And then here would be the departmental breakdown. So we're comparing these totals to see how the department looks in comparison to the city. And then we look at their hires. So over the applicants is this one compared to who they hired. And this is race and ethnicity, and then this is gender. So you can see, this is by year. So for, for 2019, here's the applicant pool. Here's the applicants that were referred to the agency and then here's their hire. So it's a way to check just like, are there any red flags here in the process in terms of the diversity of our employees and our hires? And then we look at turnover. Again, just really looking for patterns here. Is there high turnover compared to the city? Are there higher low vacancies compared to the city? Are there any disparities across gender or race and ethnicity in terms of turnover? Same thing with promotions. We have a little snapshot on sick leave and overtime and then looking at what DCR tracks. Are there any issues? So just to, to give you a flavor of the, the kinds of things that we're talking about. And then I won't show you an example, but I, I will tell you that the, the final piece that we look at is I, I ask them to think about a series of questions in advance. And it's, it's really things around, like what are their key challenges and opportunities? What are they struggling with? What's the long-term vision? And focus? What can we do? To, to support that long-term vision and focus and what's support do they, does their department or division need from the mayor's office? What support does the manager need from me personally? You know, how frequently do they want to check in with me? So we, it's really a sort of annual, so it's not, I don't want to use the word review, but it's, it is, those are the kinds of questions that we're talking about. And I ask them to identify, you know, their professional development goals. How are they moving forward for themselves? How are they supporting their staff in doing that? You know, are there any concerns? How are they advancing racial equity? How are they advancing sustainability in their work? And for both of those things, it's a question really of how are you doing that sort of externally out in the community, but also how are you doing it internally within your department or division? So, and then we have a set of just sort of expectations. Are they implementing the employee check-in process? Are they communicating regularly about like APM 3-5, 2-33, some of the requirements that we have? And are they, you know, do they use the equitable workforce planning tools? And the other res J tools in the course of their work? So that, I just want to give you a sense of, of what we're asking of our top managers here. So that you know, and also so that you can, if you have questions, you can bring them to me and I can include them in that process. And so to that end, I just wanted to flag for you, you all know, of course, that we have a new water utility general manager, Krishna Kumar. I expect that you know that our building inspector, George Hank, is retiring, which is sad, but true. And so we are in a process of hiring his replacement. Just recently have had conversations with and made renewal offers to Dave Schmidke, Heather Stoudt, Norm Davis and Mary Beth Whittlebell. So they all are all at the end of their five year. And they should all be in conversations H and R right now with HR about renewing their contracts. And then our upcoming reviews that I have in the next couple of months are for Mike Haas, Mahanth Joshi and Tom Lynch. So if you all have any input, feedback, questions on any of those managers, I encourage you to contact me directly with that. So I can take it into those executive check-ins. And then just to flag the contracts that will be up in 2022 are Mahanth Joshi, Greg Mickles and Jim O'Keefe. So again, you'll get an email from HR. But just reminding you that, you know, we are always interested in your thoughts and feedback on these managers. And you should feel welcome to contact me directly with that information. So that's the quick update, maybe not so quick update on management team. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Beheler.
Thank you, President Abbas. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for your presentation. My question is, as you stated that you're looking for red flag, what has been the trend in term of looking into those red flag?
It's an excellent question. And, and one thing that I'll, I'll say, Alder, is that I, I have asked DCR to get us back to where we're regularly reporting on the demographics for our employees, but also for our boards, commissions and committees. Because I think that's important information for us to be sharing with you and with the public to hold ourselves accountable. Overall, I will say my, my general impression, and so this is like a gestalt, not a, like direct data, is that we are doing relatively well in terms of having a racial and ethnic representation that matches the city. We're doing not at all well on gender balance. We have a, we're nowhere close to 50% women in our workforce. And so that is concerning and is an increasing focus for me. There are obviously, you know, the departments vary in that there are some departments that, that have more women than men. Just for example. But I haven't seen anything that, that really jumps out as like, this is a very concerning pattern yet. But it is also the first time through for each of these agencies. So I think that we might start to see more patterns the second time through. And I will say that I emphasize with all of them that regardless of how well they're doing on this, we still collectively all need to be doing better. To make sure that we're hiring more women and more people of color into the city's workforce. And, and we talk a lot at the agency level about the tools to do that. Both in the existing HR process, but also in creating both in the existing HR process, but also in creating, you know, shifting how we approach hiring. So one example of that is, you know, the Fleet Apprentice Program. Another example is the Green Team in Engineering. Another example is the Parks has developed a entry-level position to bring in folks who might not have all of the skills developed, get them trained, and then allow them to move up in the Parks Department. So, you know, we're doing a lot of, of thinking about how we can really open up our hiring process, do more in-house training so that we are diversifying particularly in some of the field agencies.
Thank you. As a follow-up, are the, this report that you've shared, is it for public that we can see each agency, how they're doing? And, you know, what's the trend?
So, so that's where I started, Alder, is that I've asked DCR to compile that information on a citywide level and, and make sure that we're sharing that. I honestly don't know what happened when I was on the council. We, the council got these reports annually and they seemed to have fallen off. And so I've asked for, for that to come back.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? I do not see any hand raise. So thank you very much for the presentation and update. Moving forward to the hot button topic, attendee number four, file number 65786, in-person and virtual meeting. Madam Mayor, we will start with you.
Thank you, President Abbas. I appreciate it. And I will just flag for you now, I'm, I'm obviously very interested in this. I'll stay for as long as I can. But if this, if you guys are going to talk about this for hours, I may bow out at some point. But I, as we start to think about buildings opening and more and more services being restored in person, as more things open in the community, we are starting to hear from our boards, commissions, and committees some strong feelings about what approach to take. Some of them very much want to start meeting in person again. Others very much want to retain the ability to stay fully virtual. But I, I think this is going to be, I mean, we're already getting asked about it on a regular basis. So this is a question that we really have to make some decisions on relatively quickly here and start to move forward in one way or another. As you will hear shortly from Sarah Edgerton, this is complicated. It was complicated for us to get into this fully virtual environment. It was even more complicated as we were phasing in. I don't know if, if you all remember before we had figured out whether we could actually meet virtually or not, we were doing this sort of weird, like you can come, but we can't have too many people in the room. And so we had to have three overflow rooms. And anyway, it was just not, it was very staff-intensive and not great, I think, for anybody. And now, as we push towards the ideal state, which is a hybrid model of allowing participation both in-person and virtually, it turns out that is possibly the most complicated of all states. And so Sarah is going to give you the, the full rundown on, on the whys of that in terms of technology and staffing. But I want to sort of cut to the chase and, and just make some suggestions. Given what we have heard from the different boards, commissions, and committees so far, and I don't, like, we haven't heard from all of them, right? But we definitely are hearing from them. It's clear to me that people are going to want to, want to maintain both options, right? Of being in-person and of being virtual. And it's also clear to me that we're not going to be able to accommodate a hybrid option for every single one. And so I, I really strongly lean towards offering a choice for these bodies and letting them choose their default state. For example, I will bet you money that the Manona Terrace Board would choose for their default state to be in-person meetings. Whereas I think there are others that they would prefer their default state to be virtual meetings. And that if a body wants to shift from that default state, that we would have some process for doing that, possibly a vote by the body. And that they would, there would be a timeframe in which they needed to do that. So that we don't have a situation where an agenda is noticed to be in-person, for example. And then, you know, 24 hours before it switched to virtual, but it's been, you know, up on the website as in-person this whole time. And people get confused, right? We don't want to, we want to avoid confusion. And so I would suggest that we let bodies choose and that they have to give us somewhere between two weeks to a month's notice if they're going to switch on a temporary basis. And I would suggest that we hang on to that for, you know, certainly the rest of the year, possibly longer than that. And, and, you know, we could talk about, you know, is it, is it six months? Is it a year? Do we evaluate at some point? I, I don't really know what the right thing is there, but I think probably at least six months. You know, other options that were floated to me were that we could just say, we, the city could just say, here's the default for everybody. And if you want to be different than that, you have to vote on it. Or, but I really think letting folks choose, I think, makes more sense. And so I think that makes sense for the majority of our BCCs. I think that our, our type one meetings, which are the ones that are, are, you know, broadcast on City Channel and have a full tech support, I would still be inclined to let them choose. It's slightly easier, you know, they, they do take more staff time, no matter which they're in. So it's, it's a slightly higher expectation there of, of staff work. But I would still be inclined to, to let them make that decision. For the council, I will say, I am personally inclined to come back in person as soon as possible. I think that we need to see each other's faces. And so I would be eager to make that happen. You know, as early as July, if we can make our minds up, but, but certainly within the next month or so. You know, the chambers are there. I will say, and Sarah will, will be able to give you the details on this, that the chambers are not yet in a position to support a hybrid environment. That, that renovation is not done yet. So that's a consideration. We could consider meeting somewhere else possibly if we really wanted to go that way. But I just feel like it's really important for us to, to come back together in a room. So that's my piece. And I, President Abbas, if, if you don't mind, I'll turn it over to Sarah to, to share much more information.
So, Madam Mayor, before we go to Sarah, I apologize. I forget we have a two registrant on this.
Oh, of course.
So let's, I'm take first and then Sarah will get to you. Thank you. Looking at my board, the first one is Harold Kleins. I apologize if I pronounced last name wrong.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. No, you pronounced it perfectly. So, very good. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak. And as I maybe would like to point out, I only have the opportunity to speak because I was able to do it virtually, because otherwise I wouldn't have made it downtown in time for this meeting. So my name is Harold Kleins. I'm on the Transportation Commission. I do not speak for the commission, but I did want to provide my perspective as somebody serving on how many BCCs. And yeah, I mean, I was very pleased to hear from the mayor that apparently there already has been a lot of input given from various BCCs. I mean, I wanted to testify here today because, I mean, so far, all the news that we have received as people on commissions is through like, you know, news reports or like, you know, asking our chair, have you heard anything about what the future is? And I mean, I really appreciate the efforts that staff have gone through as I looked through the materials for this meeting and like figuring out, you know, what works for residents, what other considerations that we need to take for staff. But I mean, I want to emphasize that we also need to come up with a model that works for the people serving on the boards, commissions, and committees. From my perspective, which again, sounds like might not be representative of, representative of other people, is like, I mean, we've, at the Transportation Commission, the virtual model has worked really well for us. I think we've seen some of those benefits of a lower barrier to participation from the public that has, you know, we hear people commenting with like children in the background. And we can make assumptions that those people probably wouldn't have shown up at like 8:30 at City Hall on Wednesday night. That has led to pretty long meetings. So meetings have always been long and none of you are strangers through long committee meetings. And so, I mean, I'm really worried about having, moving back to in-person meetings where we have five and a half hours meeting after a full workday for me. And yeah, then coming home at 10:30, the buses are no longer running. And yeah, having to go back to work on the next day. So I think virtual meetings have really worked well for us. And so I guess I would really encourage you to, yeah, I mean, I was glad to hear that one of the proposed solutions appears to be to let the commissions themselves decide. I mean, the problem, of course, is if there's no agreement between people on those commissions of what we should want to do. But yeah, I think I really wanted to just encourage you to get that perspective. Like, ask us how we feel about this issue. Because I think otherwise you really run risk. I mean, there's always the problem. I mean, we've had vacancies on the TC for many years. I'm not sure what all the reasons for that are, for that is. But I mean, the workload is certainly one of them. And accommodating to people's schedules, to people's childcare needs,
It's time.
transportation is important. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Harold. Next is Anne Kovich. Neither support nor oppose and want to speak. Anne?
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. Although I'm not here today representing the Transportation Commission, I am the current chair of the TC and have been for the past few years. It's a very important issue for the city. And I'm, I'm pleased to hear the mayor supporting BCCs being able to choose how they would like to meet. I really believe it's critical to solicit that feedback from the BCC members and the different BCCs in order to understand what's worked and what hasn't worked for them, who might like to continue meeting virtually and who might want to return to in-person meetings. You know, it would be a shame to lose BCC members as a result of a decision to return to in-person meetings or a hybrid meeting that requires in-person attendance if those in-person meetings aren't accessible or feasible for certain members to attend. You know, there's a lot of recommendations in the IT memo that, about type one meetings and the hybrid mode. I'm very concerned as a chair as to how much of a challenge it would be to manage a meeting where city staff would be virtual, which would cause logistical, I think logistical issues. Public registrants would appear virtually. The members would be in-person and trying to get those communications to link up. It could be a challenge. It could be problematic. It could potentially be inequitable. The 100% virtual meetings or 100% in-person meetings give consistent method of communication. And I personally have found the 100% virtual meetings have the best protocol for communications. Yeah, I really am in favor of continuing virtual meetings for the Transportation Commission and our related subcommittees. I've heard the same preference expressed by others, Harold, here tonight. We've had excellent attendance at TC meetings, which is really important in this virtual setting because we do have two vacancies and we've had those since January of 2020. So it's very important that we have it convenient for people so we can have that good attendance. We've also had more Alders attend in the virtual format. Our TC subcommittees have had excellent attendance. So I think that really promotes participation. And I've also noticed that we've had good public participation. And it's important to recognize that with the new agendas, the agenda offers an email address and a, and a phone number for people to forward their feedback. And we have gotten a significantly increased amount of feedback via email in particular. We've had items where we've had over 50 residents give us feedback via email. So if you're looking to gauge public participation, please be sure that you look at all the methods by which the public participates, not just how many people register to speak or register their thoughts about an issue. A lot of emails come our way. So if I can just say one thing, if you'd allow me just one more thing? Would that be all right?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I have certain health issues that might preclude me from attending meetings in person. And there are same concerns expressed by others, especially people with disabilities. So that's something else that I, I'd really like you to keep on and take into consideration. So thanks for your time and I'm certainly going to be following this closely. And I do appreciate the mayor's recommendation that we be allowed to choose.
Thank you very much, Anne. Sarah, floor is yours. Thank you very much for your patience.
Okay. So thank you, Alder Abbas, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for setting up the presentation. I appreciate that. So tonight I want to talk about boards, commissions, and committees in-person, hybrid, and virtual. I asked staff to go through the memo that we sent to you, shows the different scenarios. And I'm going to walk through them. But before I do that, I'm going to give you some background and, and talk about some definitions. So for background data, since we started in March, March 30th of 2020, we have had 926 virtual board, commission, and committee meetings. This is not just the, the boards, commission, and committee meetings that IT is overseeing. This is all of them that city staff has supported. And this equates to three meetings a day. And I think that the meeting schedule snapshot that I have here really represents that. For media team, they have supported 223 of these meetings. So when I say the media team, I'm talking the tech facilitator that is on with you today. It's Joe. There are five IT media team members. They have each been working for the last 15, 16 months, supporting virtual meetings in a, in a whole new way for themselves. With a total hours of 5,643 hours with the total dollar amount. And then the overtime hours of 2,523 hours. This does not include the staffing from all of the city agencies. I do want to say that some of these hours, though, are all of the hours that it has taken us to get this set up. So there has been a lot of hours, and they are referenced this, of us trying to get what you do, you know, when you're in a virtual meeting, it seems very smooth. But all of the back-end work that had to be done to get this up and, and, and running, the amount of training that was done for all of the boards, commission, and committee members, all of the city's staff. We have quite a few boards, commission, and committee meetings. You have heard me talking about this in the past. And so we had to support all of that in training and getting them feeling comfortable so that they could take over and, and run their type two meetings. And I have to say, they've been very successful in that. So definitions. What is a in-person versus a virtual versus a hybrid? So an in-person meeting is when everybody, participants, the members, the staff are all together in-person. Virtual meeting is that all of us, just like we are right now, are virtual. And a hybrid is in-person plus virtual equals hybrid. So it's some, it would be that the members would be in-person. Staffing could participate in-person or they could be virtual. And that the participants would participate virtually. Or they could, they could participate in-person as well. That is what a hybrid meeting is. There's also the type one versus type two. And the mayor did speak to this. So type one meetings are, the easiest way to know if you're in a type one meeting is there's a IT tech facilitator sitting there with you helping to run that meeting. We have a limited amount of type one meetings. We have a limited amount of type-one meetings. They are common council, common council executive committee, plan commission, alcohol license review commission, both of the transportation meetings. I believe there's one other one that I cannot recall right now. And then type-two are all of the other ones. All ninety-plus ones there are, plus all the subcommittees that go along with that. So that is the majority of them that are type-two. So what are the considerations that we need to be thinking about? So there are legal considerations and I'm not going to go over those. They are in the memo. Attorney Haas can speak to those. There are meeting process considerations that should be thought through. And again, I'm not going to speak to those at this. There are technical considerations that I am going to speak to. And then there's also the BCC members and staffing considerations that we should, we should think about as well. So I do want to note, and the mayor did point this out, this is important, that the council chambers will not be able to support a hybrid solution until the construction is completed. This is not a city project, this is a Dane County project, so we can ask them about timelines, but we do not manage those timelines. And I believe it was to start this month. I have not been down there to see if they are working on it. So I'm going to start talking about these technical considerations. So we do have some limitations with the hybrid right now. This requires more hardware and software that we need to purchase to run these meetings. We need to make sure that there is adequate internet connection, meaning that these need to be in spaces that have city network. And if we were to do type-two meetings as hybrid, there would be a lot of extra equipment to facilitate a hybrid meeting. And we would, because we would not want to have IT intervention as part of that. And then it would also, we would need to get more laptops for registration so that when attendees come to register for an item, they can do it either at online prior or right there the day of the meeting. There's also the staffing, which is a really big piece to this. For hybrid, it requires three permanent media team staff and two to three hourly staff to support this. Right now, in the virtual, it requires three staff, more or less. We have become very, very efficient in how we run these meetings. So we'll have two to three people on at the very beginning of the meeting, but then they hop off and they will move to another meeting and help to support that. And generally, the IT tech facilitator then continues to run that meeting without needing additional support. The, for the type-two meetings, as I noted, IT does not support them for the virtual. And then in-person, it's media team staff, one permanent and then two to three hourlies to help the meeting. We also have the consideration about suitable rooms. In the hybrid, we don't have that many rooms set up. We have been working on getting some of the MMB set up and we've been doing that during the pandemics. We have two rooms set up. And I believe we have a couple more that we are working on. In the 2022 budget, we have more money requested to get more of these rooms set up so that we can continue to support hybrid meetings. The other big issue, and I highlighted this all the way across because it's kind of an important one for us, is just the member speaking queue. So just thinking about how this is going to work in a hybrid meeting. We use the raise hand. In-person, the mayor and the council president has the press run system to help with a council meeting. But how do you do it in a hybrid? That's another really big one. Like, how do you, how do you continue to manage that so that there's not chaos? So the recommendations that we have, I mean, these are early, we're calling them the early hybrid recommendations. And this is something that we could do within the next several months. However, there's a big caveat to this. We would need additional staff. We do not have enough media team staff right now. And many of them need to take vacation time and they need to use that up within the next five, six months before they, before we come to the end of the year. So there are not, there is not enough staff there to support this early hybrid model. But for the, for these recommendations for a type-one hybrid meeting, we're saying that all members of the body should be in attendance in person. And again, these are just recommendations. These are things that can be considered and discussed. City staff should still appear virtually. Registrants should still appear virtually. And that we need to think about the interpretive services and how to make sure that we accommodate them and we believe that that would be virtual. For type-two meetings, they can begin to meet entirely in person once the public registration module is completed and we're reworking that. We had to redo the whole registration model. There wasn't actually a registration module pre-pandemic. Everybody just used paper and then the paper registrants were then scanned in and then uploaded to Legistar. Well, we decided to automate that so that we could have a much more aligned system with how our invites and how people are able to participate. We would also, for type-two meetings, they can remain all a hundred percent virtual, as the mayor has noted. And we are also noting for the early hybrid that we do not feel that types of meetings are eligible to meet. Lack to the room and to rooms and then also staff and the cost that would be included with that. So all type-ones can be hybrid, but all type-twos will need to remain either all virtual or all in-person. And all of those that remain virtual for, and this is more important for type-twos, that remain virtual will be able to continue to record. But if type-two meetings begin to meet in person, they will no longer be able to record. And I have to say, there are a ton of type-two meetings that are being recorded that are out there on Madison City Channel website and they are being watched. So support. There is the staffing. I've noted this several times, just trying to make sure that you hear this message. This is an important message. And that you also need to think about city agencies because if we do a hybrid model, they're also going to need additional staff. Because they're going to need to have somebody there in person helping with that registrant, helping to oversee and to assist at the laptop. This is also, you know, there's going to be more pieces to a hybrid model than we currently have in terms of what the city has for staffing in supporting this. And so we need to look at what is, what are the particulars? How do we make sure that this is all going to work? And there is going to be more than what we've seen with virtual. And then there's going to be a whole new training program that we're going to need to have to support a hybrid model. And training materials take time to develop and to implement. And then we got to turn around. It took us, I want to say probably three months to get everybody trained on the virtual and we have continuously been, that training has not ended and staff are constantly reaching out to our IT team to ask some specific questions about different parts of how to run a meeting, when they're having issues with things. So this training never ends. And so to set this up as a hybrid, it's going to take us a little bit of time to do that. And so for supporting a whole, full hybrid model, in order for us to move forward with that, the IT capital budget requests do reflect looking at a full hybrid model. And this would need to be funded for us to move forward with this in 2021 and beyond. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Sarah, for the presentation. Aldo Lema.
Thank you. So it sounds like with the early hybrid model, public registrants could only participate virtually. If a registrant misunderstands and shows up in person, does that mean that they won't be able to give testimony?
It depends. I'm going to say yes. Because when, I go back and forth on that one. So yes, technically they could. But if we are going to set up this, this early hybrid and try to reduce confusion, I think that you would want to have it one way or the other. And that, you know, then as this gets rolled out and you have, we have a plan. I mean, I think that there's a lot more here. There's all the meeting consideration pieces that need to be noted as well that we did not talk about. I think that those are good discussion items for the common council executive committee as well as perhaps the TFOG's work group to review and look at. But yes, they could technically. I don't know how that would really work in terms of, of the meeting and how that would work.
Okay, thank you. And it sounds like we have a clear idea of the costs associated with yeah, having a hybrid model for IT, but with the costs related to agencies and other agencies needing more staff. Do we have an idea of what all of the collective cost this city would be?
No. And I don't know. I mean, as we move forward, it might be that we're able to figure out more in terms of how we could reduce some of the needs for having additional agency staffing. But right now, the way we're looking at it, it would, it would be two people per agency that would need to support these meetings.
Okay, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo Lema. Aldo Bennett.
Thank you so much for this. It's so exciting to have the prospect of seeing people. So and also like go to my first in-person meetings, because I haven't seen that yet. But I was wondering, so if, if, if for, is it the type-two meetings or type-one? Okay, any type of meetings. If the meeting decides, okay, we're going to be all in-person or all virtual. I was wondering, like, how would we lose that component of city staff being able to like jump between meetings? Just because when I think about it, like Karen, you're in like every meeting. And so is like Attorney Haas. And I don't know if they would be able to do that if it's somewhere in-person and somewhere online. So how would you go about that?
Well, I'm going to say that I think staff would have to very well organize where they were. I don't know if Attorney Haas is working from home or if he is in the office. You know, depending on if the meetings were in MMB, he could pull up his laptop and then start joining another meeting. But you are right, Aldo Bennett, that is going to be a really interesting logistical process to try to figure out like how do you move from meeting to meeting? If some are virtual and some are in-person.
You know, I think, Alder, we'd have to go back to where we were pre-pandemic, which is that, you know, a department would, would choose which staff went to which meetings. And that we wouldn't be able to have staff covering multiple meetings at the same time, in the same way. I mean, we definitely have had in the past times when staff were, you know, running across the street, back and forth between plan commission and finance committee. I mean, that has definitely happened in the past at Alder's too sometimes. So it's, you know, it's not unprecedented, but I think it's been a lot easier now, obviously, to jump between Zooms. And we, you know, it would result in you not always having Attorney Haas, but having perhaps an assistant city attorney that was working on the issue instead, just for example.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Bennett. Aldo Heck.
Thank you. Sarah, you, you, you've kind of just mentioned costs associated with staff for other agencies. And I know you have no idea what that amount would be. But just, just as with IT, I assume a fair number of additional staff hours for hybrid meetings would involve overtime. But isn't that, wouldn't that be your guess? Right?
It would be.
Okay. And then just one other question. I assume that you have ways of plugging in with other Wisconsin municipalities or elsewhere to to hear about their ideas and what they're doing because I assume they might have some solutions that we haven't come up with yet. Is, are those conversations going on amongst your colleagues in other cities?
They are, not just in Wisconsin, but around the country. And for most of them, they're going back into person.
For BCCs also, you think?
Yep, just in-person for meetings. They're no longer going to be doing virtual.
And have been already, Alder. I mean, I have to say that, that we, Madison is unique in a couple of ways. Firstly, we are quite unique in how many committees we have. No other city I have ever talked to has anywhere near the number of committees that we have. And then the other way in which we're unique is that we stood up, I think, a system of virtual meetings that is really unparalleled in our, in our cities around Wisconsin, certainly. But I think also across the nation. I don't, I, I think that nobody has developed a system like our IT department has developed. And so they have been limping along in a way that is, you know, we are, we should consider ourselves sort of lucky that we've got a system that works as well as it does. And most of the mayors that I talked to, their meetings went back in person weeks or months ago. And, and the balance, I think, are starting to go back now.
Thanks. Just, just one other quick question then. Sarah, if, if we went to all in-person meetings, as, as the mayor was referencing, you know, your, I assume your staff would be not working as much on meeting logistics as, and they'd go back to working on some of the longer-term projects and things that they haven't been able to, to work on. Is that, that would be the case?
That would be. We would also be able to return to doing the shows, the talk shows, you know. So for example, common council, there's the district reports. Talk show, they would, they would do more public service announcements. They'd be able to cover more public meetings. There has been a huge decline in being able to do other work that not only is important to the city, but is also work that, that the IT media team staff enjoy. And I do worry about that in terms of balancing what their, their enjoyment of their job and covering many virtual meetings.
So currently, those, the stress, I'll call it, is primarily on the media team, whereas when all the capabilities were being developed, it was much more of IT. Is it, it's primarily focused on, on them now?
Yes. Most of the work has now shifted to IT media team.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo Heck. Aldo McKinney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Sarah, this is a question that I really do need to have you answer and it's going to put you in probably on the spot. How is the well-being of your staff? I mean, the mayor has indicated the tremendous amount of work and the, what has been put forward to, over the past, what, fourteen, fifteen months? And so how is the well-being of your staff? And if there is an illness and someone needs to take off, how are, how are you? How is the team handling that? I'm curious.
So I'm going to say that when I, when I check in with them, one of the members I was talking to a couple of weeks ago, his voice was really hoarse. He was exhausted. He had had very long meetings. You, many of you are participating in these very long meetings. And he was very worn out. They are now actively working on getting their vacation time. We, this week, have two members who are on vacation. I do have one member, Tanya Anderson, who is actually at seventy-five percent, but because she has worked so much over the last year, she is now at full-time. And she prefers to be at seventy-five percent. She wants full-time. And she prefers to be at 75%. She wants that work-life balance. She likes to have her Fridays off. But that's not happening. So there is a definite need in terms of being able to continue to support, that we need to look at how do we help the IT media team? How do we help them to continue to do all the work that they do? Because, you know, they don't just do video work. They also, all of the displays that you see around the city, at the metro bus stops that you see in our buildings, those kiosks, those are run by the media team. They also are the ones who oversee our camera management system and make sure that the cameras are where they need to be for both, for all of the public security. So they have a whole other workload that they do besides doing virtual meetings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Abbas. Sarah, you said 201 probably won't be available until the end of the third quarter, which will be the end of September. Is there a room in mind for the council with possibly hybrid, if we were to go back in person?
So I was talking to Steph about that. That's a great question, Aldo Fermin. So 215 would be the next room that we would use, which is in MMB, Madison Municipal Building, otherwise known as Room 260, but 215. But the issue there is that the mics that we would need to do so that we can make sure that we can hear everybody, we have to figure out how we're going to do that. Because, you know, we cannot rip up that floor and put in the mics the way we would want to. That's just not going to occur. So there is another hurdle for us in terms of that technical. There is Room 153, but then how would we handle all of the participants if we were to do that? So that's that other question of how would we handle all of the registrants that could be in person versus virtually?
And there's no system? Nah, well, kind of. There's no system in place either for like raising hands or queue or anything for Alders like in 201?
No, they're not. And that's why there's that other hurdle there. Yep.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Aldo Fermin. Any other question for the mayor or for Sarah? I do not see any. Sarah, thank you very much for your presentation. We will move forward with the discussion. Aldo Fermin, would you like to talk about the attachment at CCEC?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So the T-Pogs Implementation Work Group has been talking about this particular issue for quite some time. And we've been trying to figure out how to best get feedback from Alders on in-person meeting, hybrid meeting, and virtual meetings. And I will say, so everybody got a copy of a spreadsheet that we had asked people to look at, and I think Karen's going to put up on the screen at some point. But, you know, the thought was that we did, you may notice, we did not put hybrid in there for discussion. Because one of the things that Sarah's memo makes incredibly clear is that hybrid can come in a ton of different formats and a ton of different forms. And so I do think at some point, we need to have a discussion, really dive in if we're going hybrid, on what does that look like? Will we allow any members to be virtual? Will all committee members or slash council members be in person? What do we do about public comment in person or virtual only? There are a lot of things to decide and figure out. But what we're hoping to do with this grid is have a discussion on the functionality of the meetings. And so the idea behind this is to look at virtual meetings, whether in the following categories: Common Council, Type 1, which we talked about today, Type 2, which we talked about, and then Neighborhood Meetings, and talk about what does it look like from, what are the pros and cons related to public accessibility and public participation when it comes to those meetings, whether they're virtual or in person, and then consideration of functionality of the bodies. And so, you know, Common Council being in person or virtual, what does that mean for how the body functions? And so I'm hoping some people got some time to think about this. We've obviously gotten the mayor's opinion on meeting format, and we've heard from Sarah on some of the technical aspects of changing formats, et cetera. But really, hopefully, we could take a step back with this and think about, you know, what's good about virtual and what's good about in-person, and help make a decision, help us get closer to making a decision as a group on which direction we want to go for, you know, short term and obviously long term. I think we've all learned a lot with the virtual. Some of our new members have not had the opportunity to do in-person, obviously. But hopefully, understand the concepts enough to give some thought to that. So I'm going to, that's my introduction. I really do want to open the floor to Alders that have thoughts about, you know, the spreadsheet and thoughts about, you know, the meetings. I don't know if we want to start with just focusing on Common Council and virtual versus in-person, and, you know, the public accessibility and public participation, and the consideration of the functions of the body, and then move on to the other types. I'm open to thoughts from the body. I'll turn it over to you, Council President.
Thank you very much, Aldo Fermin. Aldo McKinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to lower my hand because mine was more of a procedural question, and it probably is out of place at this time. But I'd like to really address a procedural question. But I'm lowering my hand at this time for the point of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo McKinney. Aldo Bennett.
This is just a quick question, maybe it's a point of order, but like, I was wondering, did this get sent out, like, with the intentions of it being a survey? Or maybe I misunderstood that? No? Okay. Well, then I don't really have questions at this time, but I guess if there was a discussion point, I think, like, this whole thing is something that all, like, pointing out they should like vote on if we wanted to be in-person or virtual.
Thank you, President Abbas. I did just want to flag that if we, if the council decides that it wants to stay virtual after the CCB is open, we may have, we may have an issue with the ordinances. And so we may have to look at that. Or we may have to come back in person and then change the ordinances to be able to go back to virtual. I think we do not have a similar problem for other BCCs. But I just wanted to flag that we, there may be a legislative issue that we need to handle, depending on what we collectively choose. I don't think that's, you know, like, of course, we can do that, right? I just want to flag that it's a potential issue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for chiming in. Aldo Carter?
Just real quickly, I was just going to mention the ordinance too. Thank.
Thank you very much. I will quickly chime in from the bottom, which is an easy one: Neighborhood Meetings. I do think so each order understands their district really well. Each order understands what type of issues their constituent. And I think so with the Neighborhood Meeting, just like Type 1, Type 2, we let the order decide whether they want to do in-person, if they feel comfortable, if the Public Health Order allow them, if they want to do virtual. I think so it should be up to the order of the district to decide in which direction they want to go with the Neighborhood Meeting. So I could start from there. Aldo Heck.
Thank you. I don't disagree with what President Abbas just said, but I'm going to drift into public accessibility as I discuss that. You know, I've found that Neighborhood Meetings are where you get people who are the most inexperienced with virtual meeting technology and struggle because they're, they tend not to be people who've attended Common Council or Type 1 or Type 2 meetings. And I find that that those are often times where people get confused. It happens in our other meetings too. And certainly, remaining all virtual comes with its own disenfranchisement potential. People who don't have internet, people who don't have a computer, people who struggle in the same ways as those Neighborhood Meetings. As for the mayor's suggestion about letting Type 1 and Type 2 committees kind of decide, I'm a little bit hesitant about that because I feel like, you know, there are people who've been on boards, BCCs, that have never met their fellow committee members, just as some of the new Alders have not met us that were on pre-pandemic. I guess I feel in some ways, I'm not really filling out the table in what I'm talking about. But I, in some ways, wish we could figure out a way to have some in-person meetings for each body and some hybrid. And it would have to be on a predictable schedule so that people can at least meet each other and have some comfort with who they're working with. But I still think abandoning virtual meetings is problematic, even for Common Council, and especially for Type 1 and Type 2 meetings. But I do see some merit in trying to find a way to occasionally have in-person meetings. But as has been mentioned, I think hybrid meetings are, at this point, too complicated and too expensive. That's sort of just some random thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Aldo Heck. Aldo Carter, your hand is raised. Do you want to speak? Aldo Curry?
Thank you, President Abbas. Just for background, I was wondering if either the mayor or another staff member could share more about the ordinance? Like, was there an amendment to an original ordinance because of the pandemic and we had to go virtual that now needs to be re-amended, or?
Attorney Haas?
Yes, good afternoon. Ordinance Section 2.15 was amended last year. And it states that meetings of the council shall not be conducted telephonically or electronically unless either there's a special or emergency meeting, or there's another provision where there's an officially declared city, county, state, or federal emergency, and members of the council are unable to attend a meeting in person, or when the Director of Public Health determines it is reasonable and necessary for the prevention of suppression of disease, that regularly scheduled meetings may be held telephonically or via the internet. It also says the mayor and council president shall determine if a regularly scheduled meeting is to be held telephonically or via the internet. So that's the existing ordinance. As the mayor indicated, you know, it can be changed. But, you know, once the building is open and there's no longer a public emergency or determination of the Public Health Director, that ordinance would seem to require in-person meetings, as it reads right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Haas, and thank you, Aldo Curry, Aldo Fermin.
Thank you, President Abbas. I want to point out, you know, the T-Pogs Implementation Work Group has struggled in similar ways that we're struggling this evening, thinking about these things and trying to organize our thoughts. Hopefully, this can help. But really, the goal of this exercise isn't, it's good to know about the ordinance. It's, who decides is good to know, you know. But this is really to talk about the pros and cons of these different formats. So, for example, Neighborhood Meetings, I'm going to throw one in there. They can be recorded when they're virtual. And so when residents can't appear at that meeting in person, they can easily watch it later on. I know that's been actually some of my most popular posts, have been posting recordings of Neighborhood Meetings. But things like that is what I'm hoping, what we're hoping to kind of have as part of this discussion. I think there are going to be a gazillion different ways for us to slice how we do this. But I really think as a body, we should be thinking about, you know, what is important for the public when it comes to this, and what's important for consideration of how the body functions. I'm really hoping we can get a bunch of things there. So I just wanted to kind of throw in that point of clarification and an idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo Fermin. Aldo Lemmer?
Thank you. I wanted to raise a point that is similar to a point that Aldo Heck raised, and that is that 100% virtual does not mean more accessible for everyone. It is an option that disenfranchises people as well. People who have anxiety around technology, people who have, you know, who have tech issues, trying to deliver public testimony and are unable to do so. Yeah, those kinds of things keep people from participating in those meetings. And that applies, you know, that's applied to Neighborhood Meetings for me, and that has applied to council and BCCs as well.
Thank you very much, Aldo Lemmer. Next, and then it's myself. So I will quickly talk about some similar thing which Aldo Lemmer recently mentioned. Technology is special with internet accessibility. It does have its plus and minuses. Some people have barrier of technology. Some people have barrier of internet. Some people have barrier of learning disability. So some people prefer to create connection in person. They want to be seen. They want to be heard. They want to have that interaction. And another thing is really key with this Common Council, I was lucky I had a one-year experience in an in-person setting, where there was a great opportunity for me to talk to my fellow Alders and learn about stuff and agenda items and create that understanding, understand the body language. We all came through different culture, have different type of communication way, the way we communicate, regardless if we speak the same language or a different language. You know, English is not my first language, but we mean to say, we all are different human beings, 20 different personalities. So I think so it really creates that connection when we are in person in Common Council to understand colleague. And after, before the meeting, there's also an opportunity to know each other and understand each other's opinion. It's really hard through email or through Zoom, creating that connection. So that is also a beneficial way for us as a Common Council to really integrate together in person, as to the direction we decided to go. Virtual does absolutely, on the other side, which will, which will have meetings provide accessibility to those who cannot commute, who have a barrier of, let's say, they have kids at home, and they want to, you know, they want to just get in a meeting virtually. They don't need to commute. They don't need to park. Perhaps sometimes they don't need to find, you know, a child here because their spouse might be taken care of 10 minutes or 3 minutes of their time or 20 minutes. However, they wish to stay there. So, and also, some of our Common Council meeting goes really late, 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM. So virtual world also gives that accessibility and opportunity as well. So there are some, just want to throw some plus and minuses there. Aldo Foster?
Yeah, I think just to echo a little bit of that, President Abbas, I think for me, the biggest benefits of in-person are not even so much related to the meetings themselves, but that opportunity to connect, let's say, for Common Council, to have those kind of side conversations before and after the meeting that just don't really seem to happen in the virtual setting. I think the same thing, perhaps, for in-person Neighborhood Meetings. You know, it's a great opportunity, again, for people in real life to sort of have those one-off conversations that don't really happen in the virtual setting. I think it'd actually be interesting to think about, are there ways to help facilitate something similar in the virtual setting? But I haven't actually seen that happen. On the flip side, I think, to me, the starting point for this really is around the public participation. And I would say while there are And I would say while there are kind of barriers on both sides, I've heard much, much, much more on the side of sort of gratitude from my constituents around their ability to access both neighborhood meetings as well as BCCs and common council meetings. I think it's really worth noting, and most of you are probably familiar with the TFOGS report and recommendations, but there were really, really strong recommendations pre COVID about basically building remote access options for members of the public. So being able to call in or video in and participate. And, you know, we actually IT sort of evaluated that back then. And as you can imagine, similar to basically, it was the hybrid question. It's very difficult and very expensive to do that. But there is a really long list of of key recommendations from that report around addressing all of the barriers, childcare, transportation, et cetera, that come with that face to face participation. And I've just heard over and over from my constituents how great it is for the mom of a young kid to be able to log in and follow along and even even give comments while cooking dinner and being at home with their kids. So to me, that's one that I'm really going to struggle with. You know, if we go back to face to face, I don't see how we we lose that capacity and capability. I think it's really going to be seen as a step backwards for a lot of people. And I think a lot of that also applies to ourselves as alders as well as BCC members. We heard it tonight from a couple folks. But I mean, for especially for the newer alders, I mean, I was pretty much, you know, downtown from like 4:00 PM until 9:00 or 10:00 PM, you know, three or four nights a week with an hour or two in between meetings where I'm sitting at, you know, the computer at CCB waiting for my next meeting to start. Yeah, I was one of those that had to run back and forth from MMB to CCB to, you know, chime in on alcohol license in my district and go back to my other meeting. You know, I certainly appreciate being able to do, it's still a lot of hours of meeting, but it's it's really intense when that's all face to face downtown. So I think that's another real big plus in my mind with the remote setting.
Thank you, Aldo Foster. Aldo Bennett?
Okay, I want to just like echo Alder Foster's comments there and say personally, I'm partial to at least having common council meetings virtually still for the time being. And, you know, although I'm excited to see you all in person, because I don't know if I've seen every one of you in person yet. I I feel like that's also why it's important that we allow camera use during virtual meetings. And like Aldo Foster said, it really depends on people like because I think we've seen that public participation increase and during the past year. And I think it would be kind of cool to see that numbers on how public participation has increased just because, you know, people can attend because people can't attend that couldn't attend before because they have kids or they couldn't find parking or it's just too much with having a full time job. So that's why I'm a bit partial to hosting meetings virtually. And also, I think that it helps with on the mental health side for some people where it's anxiety provoking to be in person. And that's why I would like to be on a virtual setting. And I I agree with Mayor Satya on like allowing committees to decide on whether or not they like to go in personal or remain virtual because the culture and content of committees vary greatly depending on what committee it is. And also, I want to point out that I think that conversation shouldn't come with also discussing the capacity of city staff such as Karen and Attorney Haas because it's been a benefit to us for them to be able to attend multiple meetings at the same time. And I don't want to lose that at the expense of I either or going virtual or in person. That's been two cents. And as for neighborhood meetings, I agree with what Alder Abbas said that it really, I think the name, each alder knows their neighborhoods the best and neighborhood associations know themselves the best. Whereas like, I don't want to speak for any other neighborhood, but I know in the campus area neighborhood association, there hasn't really been too much issues with going virtual just because Gen Z. But that's my two cents.
Thank you, Aldo Bennett. Aldo Edverson?
Thank you, President Abbas. I have one question and then a couple comments. Can somebody say historically, didn't we have access to people could dial into the meetings? Is that true? Could call in, phone in? Is that something that was common appearance or ability to be done? Or how did that work?
Alder, it wasn't common, but it was possible and it but it was exercised for the committee members not for the public. So and it had to be notified, you know, in advance and noticed on the agenda, I believe. But so it did absolutely happened. I can think of maybe, I don't know, a handful of times when I was in a meeting where somebody was, one of the members was on the phone, but but it wasn't very common and it was cumbersome.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. So I think meeting in person is also is a great, you know, it's nice to be able to see everybody and be able to have those side conversations and to get work done is super helpful. But I agree with a lot of the comments about the the increase of people participating because of the virtualized. And I think we should position ourselves in the future with the budget. You know, if possible, we should position ourselves to the full hybrid scenario going forward. So we have that capability of both in person and access to virtual. I know a lot of constituents in my district also are super thankful that they could participate virtually, even though the circumstances forced it. And for me personally, in person is always a great option. I think we should look at and consider if we can get there. Working with many meetings and many staff in my job, my day job, having the relationships built before we went to COVID and ended up having to go remote was super helpful. And I know we did lose that connection even within my own team, the personal connection that's established when you're able to meet in person. So I think we need to do what is going to be best for the public access to be able to have these meetings and also to get the job done. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo. Aldo Terry?
Thank you. So I had a couple of questions and then comment like Alder Edverson. So my first question is in regards to neighborhood meetings. I mean, who alders like myself, I think we've only known virtual campaign and virtual work. And based on the presentation before, if a neighborhood meeting was held virtually, would there be technical assistance from staff or would that be the onus of the alder?
Well, I could answer initial question and Attorney Haas can all chime in. So if you're organizing a neighborhood meeting with just your neighborhood association, you can do by yourself. The city staff is not involved in organizing. But if it's regarding the development project, like the Galway project in my district or Remish Farm in the district, I'm just giving example of my district because those meeting I organize. So I invited city staff on those meetings because people have question about traffic. And council office basically reserved the Zoom link and invitation was set. And the city planning, Cameron Farkov, I requested him to moderate the meeting. And another meeting, I asked Tim Park to moderate that meeting. So staff could help you with that project wise. But if you have like issues on F35, I have many meetings with the neighborhood. I did organize all by myself. Or I could ask council office to set the Zoom link. But usually alders take a lead either in person or those type of meeting. You could also see that type one, type two between neighborhood. So type one is mostly where you have major projects where staff is also involved.
Thank you. Oh, man, I had another question follow up and I forgot. But on perspective for going back in person for common council meetings, I'm sure this is an easy fix, but I recently received my FAB and parking pass, but I have no idea where the parking structure is. I've navigated the CCB before, but if that is a consideration, I would hope that there would be some intentionality behind guiding newer alders into that process expectations. Another feedback point, I think, about transitioning to in person versus virtual for council meetings for the public is to me, like, we've been going with Zoom for almost 16 months. My 90 year old grandma with assistants can get on. Like, I understand that it's not inclusive for everyone, but I also look at it as a place of privilege, kind of, if you can't afford childcare, if you can't afford to take off work to speak on an issue. I think that is a issue of possibly privileged poverty that also should be considered. And I don't know if there are other city resources or resources that we could pull from that would provide additional funding to cover costs for hybrid. Yeah, my last comment was around neighborhood meetings, but I forgot. So if that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Terry. Aldo Foster?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to also chime in on that question of neighborhood meetings. So in my experience, I would say actually through every kind of meeting other than the ones that President Abbas mentioned, which were like, you know, with the neighborhood association kind of thing, they've all been supported by basically whatever agencies is working on that thing. So, you know, if it's an upcoming road construction project, engineering sets all of that up, facilitates the meeting, et cetera. If it's a parks project, same thing. And one of the other benefits, I guess, worth mentioning with that, thinking about like PIMs for road projects, one thing I've found really beneficial is the ability for members of the public to ask questions sort of verbally, but also being able to type in questions. And I think in terms of, somebody mentioned before, sort of different comfort levels, I've been really pleased to see how many people put questions into like the, you know, written format that that come through that I think are just, my experience in the in person ones, it's often like one or two people that are basically dominating that in person meeting. And it's much more challenging to hear from a kind of a wide variety of people. And I've, in my experience, the virtual neighborhood meetings seem to do that a little bit better. And one last comment is, we've had a version of this discussion at the Sewers District Commission. And what we ended up with for a plan is to stay virtual as our kind of standard meetings, but then plan on meeting several times a year in person, both to do any of sort of more kind of heavy conversations that we could do in person, but also to try and address that question of just kind of more relationship building and having that opportunity to be face to face. So I just put that out there as another potential option through a different version of hybrid where the meetings themselves aren't hybrid. But perhaps, I think somebody else mentioned tonight, you know, we could do virtual meetings, but then have more special meetings could be in person or something like that.
Thank you, Aldo Foster. Aldo Fermin?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to, I will first echo what Aldo Foster said. I mean, I think there are a lot of different ways to slice this. And I think, again, I'm going to continue to harp on the format of this discussion, which is, you know, figuring out what we think the pros and cons are makes it much easier, I think, to figure this stuff out. So like one idea that I thought of a while ago is if we stayed virtual, there's no reason we couldn't figure out having a room in CCB that actually broadcasts the meeting. And so if you don't have a computer and you do want to go downtown, you can go downtown. You could watch it on a monitor. And then if you want to speak, you can go up to that computer and speak. So figuring out kind of what the pros and cons are, there are a lot of different ways we can we can come out, come up with, you know, solutions to fix that, you know? I think, could we have a council meeting that's virtual one week and focus on public comment just at that meeting? And then actually have our discussion and voting in person? So there are certainly a few different ways to look at that. The other thing I just wanted to point out, because people keep talking about letting committees decide, I kind of want to remind the council, the committees are our committees as a council. We need much, much, much less committees. We need to get very serious about redoing our committee structure. But I think it's incredibly important for us to be part of a decision when it comes to the functionality of committees. I don't want a committee deciding that they want to meet in person because, you know, they they think it's much more difficult for the public to participate. And they like that, for example. I'm not saying that that would be the choice. But something to think about, the committees do do work for the council. And I think it's important for for us to set as much direction as possible and understand why they make, you know, whatever decision they want to make. And, you know, maybe it's a similar exercise, asking them this, you know, what they think is better about the functionality or worse about the functionality for virtual in person of their body as well as public accessibility for the meeting. So some just some thoughts. Thanks.
Thanks, Aldo Fermin. Vice President Morton?
Um, I kind of like trying to change my comments a little bit in light of what Aldo Fermin just said. But I'm wondering if we could then like, never mind, I never mind. I take my hand down.
All right. Better me, I will go after you. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Abbas. I did just want to build on what Alder Fermin said a little bit. I am definitely hearing more and and I am being pitched on software solutions, I have to say, for separating public comment from the actual in person meeting. And allowing, they're calling it, you know, asynchronous meetings, right? So allowing public comment to come in over a wider period of time a mix of virtual and in person, having specific meetings that are, you know, just for public comment. You know, I think I'm just seeing out there a whole range of different ways that people are talking about approaching this. And so I think that's interesting. You know, I think that I'm glad that, you know, this has come up as as one of the points of discussion. You know, and I think we should consider whether and how we want to offer, you know, more opportunities for public comment virtually. And whether that, you know, actually needs to be tied towards a meeting that starts at 6:30 at night, right? Or whether we could have that happen, you know, over the course of some period of time, give enough time for all of us to absorb that public comment and then have an in person meeting, you know, amongst us. So I just think, you know, there is there is definitely that conversation happening out there. I think it's worth us paying attention to it and thinking about it. And then, you know, I just because I have to, I think that, again, Alder Fermin is right. There's lots of possibilities here. Most of the possibilities will cost more in either money or staff time or both than what we're doing right now or what we would normally do. So that's not a barrier, right? Like, we can choose to spend our money that way. But it means that we would have to cut something else. And or possibly that we would have to lay off staff in order to let Sarah hire more staff. And so that's that part of the conversation is probably most productively done through the budget process. But, you know, and I don't think we need to make those decisions now. I just flagged that that there are going to be, you know, the realities of budget and staff time are going to, you know, come crashing down on us pretty quickly at some point.
Thank you very much. Aldo Carton, do you mind if I take Sarah's hand first, comments first, and then come to you? Is that okay? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Alder Conklin. So I just wanted to continue on with the comments that the mayor made. We do, we are using Legistar, and we are going to be doing a upgrade just simply because we need to continue to keep it moving, kind of continuity of operations, make sure Legistar is working for everyone. And there are features as we move to this upgrade that do allow for e-commenting. So there are some opportunities even right there where we can look at that in 2022. Again, going back to what the mayor is saying, that we would want to look at some budget considerations. And then also, what does this mean to city staff? Because they have to help support what the e-commenting look like, and then how does it come in? And so those would be other process issues that we would ask the common council to look at and address. But there is certainly opportunities for it, and we in fact have software that would allow us to do that today as once we are upgraded.
Thank you, Sarah. Alder Conklin.
Okay. Hey, everybody. It is, it would be like so great to see everybody in person, of course. But what I think about is like, you know, the barriers as far as like, you know, people having medical conditions where they may need to check their blood sugar, they may need to eat something every couple hours. So I know that, you know, some of my constituents had thanked me when I came on board. Like, I'm so glad that we can access this virtually. It gives everybody much more opportunities from working a full-time job. Like, many people have said, they need to come home, take care of their children, cook, get their kids to bed, all while they're able to still follow along and participate in these meetings. So I definitely think that virtual is, should still be a priority and/or hybrid. Because I guess we, I think I agree with Alder Fermin, excuse me, because we do need to make it clear what hybrid means. Because me going to school, hybrid was one week we were in-person, one week we were virtual. So I think there does definitely need to be some clarification about what exactly hybrid is meaning. But also, I think we need to, is this just for the public or is this for council members as well? You know, like, are we going to be allowed to maybe have three hybrids where we can attend virtually if need be? You know, so I think we need to have clear expectations of what hybrid is, but I think it's a great opportunity for as many people who want to access the meetings are able to access the meetings. And then along those lines with what Alder Fermin was saying, I think that the council or the committee meetings, excuse me, should still remain virtual. For my reasoning for saying that is because I did attend one meeting and people had RSVP'd, and so we were at Quorm. But once the meeting actually started and we waited the 15 minutes, we didn't actually make Quorm, so we had to cancel the meeting. So I could see how that could be, you know, like frustrating. We've tried to find parking, you know, we rushed home, eat dinner, get downtown, and then we were there for 15 minutes and then we go home. So I think we really do need to consolidate the committees and keep those virtual, in my opinion. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will quickly speak about type one, type two meeting. I think so it makes a lot of sense for us to let the committees decide either they want to remain in-person or virtual. I'm going to give you one small example. So I used to sit on Urban Design Commission for two years. In Urban Design Commission, I used to see rendering, material, bricks, physically touch them, see the color. However, once it become into virtual world, they can still send us the pictures, but pictures cannot really justify the colors itself. So it's a little challenging. However, the commission have expertise of architects and designers and other people sit there. So perhaps that commission can decide for themselves, do they really want developers to come and show the material? Or do they want developers to, you know, they are fine with looking online stuff? Or let the staff decide on the colors of rendering or whatever the design is, the material in front of us. I remember at the Design Commission, we have seen a lot of materials and really see the color, how it's going to look like. And color could be very technical, it's a variety of colors out there. So I think so it makes sense for commissions and committees to decide. That's how I feel personally, but at the council level, I will really say that we should absolutely, the underlying question is, we really need to see how to improve the participation. But with participation, how we can manage the council workload? Common council meetings are going to 4:00 AM, 4:30. Many of new orders send me email as a council leadership, we could do something. Matter of fact is, I have a limited power in my own hand. I deferred one of the zoning ordinance and tried to manage things, but there are a lot of moving parts. So perhaps we should think creatively while we are looking into hybrid, virtual. Also thinking along those lines might be we want to have public comments in a separate day, or perhaps we want to meet in-person next day or some other time. Perhaps we need to think through other things, and during the budget, we could allocate those money to make those things possible because creativity requires investment, an investment of staff and timing and other ideas. Also, I think so in-person meetings are very, very important, on a personal level, because our common council sometime we also struggle connecting with each other. Our connection is Zoom connection, and it's not the personal connection. On a personal connection, we can discuss issue before the meeting, after meeting, iron out things and be more collaborative and create that bridge and a space to create that bridge. Right now, it takes a lot of effort on a virtual world to understand and do stuff. So I think so it could help as a committee, all of us, fully of us, if we decide to give a chance to in-person, while we find other mechanism at the same time. Thanks. Alder Heck.
Thank you. I just wanted to add something related to one of President Abbas's comments. There are decisions to be made, you know, whether virtual or in-person about these, I'll call them application materials that he mentioned at Urban Design Commission. We, in the past, received very thick packets of information for plan commission that are analogous. And for council meetings, if you receive the full packet of written information, it's quite a thick packet. And I'd say that for some, that's great because they prefer to look at paper, but it's also, in my mind, kind of a waste of resources. And also in the development process adds a great deal of expense to the submittals because they have to, I don't remember the number, but like 13 copies of something that's this thick, and it gets quite expensive. So there's kind of a trade-off there between both meeting packets and submittals for any kind of development or probably even city building plans and such like that, things like that. Thanks.
And Alder Heck. Alder Lemmer.
Thank you. I think it does make sense to allow BCCs to decide whether virtual or in-person would make sense to them. And I think the example of UDC illustrates why very well. There are some things that you can do in person that you cannot do virtually and actually seeing and feeling materials that are being proposed for buildings is a good example of that. And I think that we can also trust the folks on those boards, commissions, and committees to make those decisions. And I think that we should be able to trust them to do that. And I guess I had a question, I'm not sure if this is like the right place to ask it, but I think the, you know, ideas and the things that have been brought up around making public comment more accessible by expanding in the period of time for people to be able to provide public comment and the mediums for them to do so, I think we really need to do that. And I'm wondering, I guess I'm wondering how to make sure that we are exploring that and whether that means that we need to add that as a separate discussion to future agendas. I just want to make sure that we're continuing to pursue that. And I'm also wondering if there are statutory limitations on that.
Regarding exploring more, I will say we could discuss those more on CCEC and those options and communication, we should keep it open regarding statutory limits. Attorney Ass probably could answer that question.
So when there is a required public hearing under the statutes, zoning hearing and appeal, there has to be an opportunity for the public to provide input. Beyond that, there is no requirement in the statutes for the council to collect public comments. The open meetings law only requires that the public have the opportunity to attend the meeting, observe the meeting. The ordinances require an opportunity for public comment. There are some municipalities, Milwaukee, for instance, does not have a public comment period during its council meetings. And so it's not a requirement of the statutes, it is currently a requirement of the ordinances.
Okay, and can the public provide like recordings of their public comment in advance? Is that allowed? Are we allowed to provide like, you know, longer periods of time for public comment periods? Are there channels that they can provide their public comments through?
Sure, I mean, as others have said, there's a number of different ways. I mean, attending a council meeting obviously is not the only way to provide public comment. People can send emails, they can contact their Alders ahead of time. The city can set up, you know, additional portals. I mean, there's, I think there are notifications that communications can be sent to all Alders. There can be separate meetings set up. So there are a number of avenues that where public comments can be collected. And I guess I would just also note that, as others have noted, just the large number of BCCs that the city has, that in itself, when you have a referral to four or five different committees and all the same people show up at all of those meetings for hours at a time, that in itself, I think, is a consideration for, you know, how you handle public comment and public participation and who gets heard and how many times they get heard.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Alder Lemmer. Alder Foster.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just gonna suggest, I mean, I think, I think folks are right in acknowledging that there are a lot of boards, committees, and commissions, and there might be really good reasons for some to want to approach it in a different way. I wonder if it might be useful to think of it as, maybe we should still set a default and then allow a BCC to either request or just, you know, set their own standard. But just, I think if we just sort of like, if the message went out to all BCCs, hey, you all need to decide what you want to do, it could, it's just going to create like a lot of work for a lot of them that may overcomplicate it. So for example, if we thought a good default for the rest of the year was to stay virtual generally, we could do that, say that's the default now for any BCCs that are interested in switching to in-person. Here's how to go about doing that. I think it might be just an easier way to manage it than like, yeah, sending the message to all BCCs and saying you have a task of, you know, having this on an upcoming agenda, having a discussion, talking through it, voting on it, and then like managing a lot of potential changes all at once. And if we, if, I guess either way, we should be really clear about what is possible and what's not possible before they're having those discussions so that they aren't thinking that they're gonna have some great hybrids set up and making assumptions about what access they'll have and what, you know, both for their members as well as the public. So we should just make sure we have something really clear for them before we even raise that as a potential.
Thanks, Alder Foster. Vice President Martin.
Kind of tying Alder Foster's statement to what Alder Fermin was saying a bit earlier and how we should, you know, that they are our committees, boards, and commissions, or some of them are. Would it be too complicating to kind of take an approach such as Alder Foster suggested and then have the folks that want, you know, we have our normal, you know, this is going to be the standard for the rest of the year. If you want to change, please like submit reasoning or something as to why you want to change, and then the council can approve it. This is not to be like, then we sit here and debate for hours about every single one, but just so we can like take a look and say, yep, that looks okay. I don't know. If that's a possibility, if it's not, no worries. I'm just trying to kind of put some things together, so.
Thank you, Alder Martin. Alder McKinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to go back to what I heard Sarah say, what the mayor said, and the fact that no other municipality has as many boards, committees, and commissions as we do. And so as we expand these conversations about having the committees, the boards, committees, and commissions decide, one of the things that we cannot lose, lose the fact is is that we need to really take a look at the number of boards, committees, and commissions. And I don't want this to be, that to be lost into this discussion because as we are reviewing the number of boards, committees, and commissions, you know, some will not be in effect, I don't know if some will be combined, and I don't know what the outcome is. But it is a herculeanium task to really seriously look at the number of boards, committees, and commissions that the city has and how we can have that parallel to this discussion about what format that we are going to go in to the future. Because it's a conversation that cannot be lost as we are trying to decide, you know, where, what platform to land on. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder McKinney. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. To Vice President Martin's question, comment, I would strongly recommend that if you do want to go with a default, right? So that the default is everybody's in-person or the default is everybody's virtual, that we do make it clear that there's a path for BCCs to choose the other way around. But that you make that path be through council leadership and the mayor's office so that we don't have to bring it, so it's not contingent on meeting schedules and coming back in front of this body or the full council for approval. I think that would just be far too cumbersome for these bodies. And I mean, you know, Alder Foster is saying that it'd be too cumbersome for them to even have the discussion themselves. Imagine if we had to have them have the discussion and then bring it through here and the council. So, you know, the way that we handled starting up virtual meetings for all of our BCCs was between council leadership and my office. And, you know, Lila has been working with Sarah and her team and committee staff for this whole year plus to manage this whole process. So I have a high degree of confidence that we would be able to accommodate the requests coming in for something different. And, you know, what we had done, Alder Carter will recall, if she's still here, that she and I would talk about, you know, anything that was needed for a particular committee. I talked about it with, I think, even with Council President Badar back when she was council president. So we were deciding sort of on the fly about what could be scheduled, do we have enough staffing? And trying to manage all that. I think as we, you know, as we contemplate some of these bodies coming back in person, you know, we'll have to go back to our room scheduling process, which is not a problem at all. But, you know, we do have, we have limited meeting rooms, we have limited Zoom licenses, and we have, at this point in time, not the ability to do a hybrid. But if we were even to contemplate going in that direction, we would have even fewer rooms. But if we were even to contemplate going in that direction, we would have even fewer rooms that could accommodate a hybrid approach. So we do need to, to just keep tabs on those resources, um, at least until we, you know, someone finds money to, to make more of them available.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I agree with Aldo Foster and as well as with the mayor, uh, suggestion, uh, or recommendation. I think so we should as a council give a default setting and then council leadership and the mayor office, we can work with those committees and provide a clear direction on it. Any other questions or comments on the agenda item in front of you? I was al- almost going to say none, but Aldo Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, just one more, um, in terms of like that next phase. I'm, I'm kind of thinking of it in my mind, like, yeah, what are we going to do for the rest of this year? You know, clear, there's, there were a few folks that really talked about the value of thinking about an investment in more of a hybrid model to get, you know, best of both worlds in the future. But obviously that, that's cost intensive. So it seems like this might be, uh, part of, you know, our upcoming budget discussion for 2022 and beyond. Um, it might be worthwhile starting to think about some sort of a survey that we could send out certainly to BCC members, um, just to start to get some broader perspective. Not about what do you want to do next month, but kind of in general, what are folks' feelings about the, the pros and cons of, um, you know, virtual versus in-person? And also thinking about, you know, how we also get a pulse from members of the community. I know a lot of us have spoken about what we've heard from folks, but, you know, should we be thinking about, um, getting some additional feedback on that front for that kind of longer-term decision? So just, just something for us to maybe, um, start working on.
Thanks, Aldo Foster. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I just wanted to, to make sure that I'm hearing, uh, you all correctly and that there is a, a sense of consensus here so that, that, um, I can work with council leadership to implement that consensus. Um, so what I'm hearing is that there's a, a desire to have the default for BCCs. I'm not talking about the council right now, right? But for BCCs, that the default would be virtual, but that individual bodies could, uh, could request to have their default be in-person. Um, and that, that those requests would go to myself and council leadership, uh, for approval. Um, and that, that we would start to implement that, uh, when the buildings are open. So for example, if the library board wanted to meet at Central Library in person and they came to council leadership, we could say yes to that. Um, but until CCB is, is open, we couldn't host meetings in chambers or in other meetings in CCB, similar for MMB, et cetera. Um, so that's, that's, that part, let me say, is not negotiable, right? That we can't have public meetings in buildings that are closed to the public. Um, so that's the, like, the precondition, but that once those buildings are open, um, that then it, what I'm hearing you say is that you want your default to be virtual, but that individual BCCs could request to, to go, um, in person and that we would deal with that at, at council leadership.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Aldo Foster.
Yeah, that, I mean, that sounds good, uh, by me for sure. I was just going to add one clarification that might be useful when that message goes out. And I, and I do think the BCCs as bodies should, if they're going to request that, um, do it as a, as a body decision and not have it be the chairs, um, thinking that they're supposed to make that decision or that they can. Um, so it might be worth just being explicit on that.
So, so, so each body would vote? Yeah.
Thank you, Aldo Foster. Aldo Bennett.
I just had questions for council leadership and the mayor. Um, I was wondering, because, uh, Madam Mayor, you brought it up. Like, do you all have the capacity, um, if, for it to approve the requests? Um, like, say if, like, half the BCCs requested to be in-person, like, would you have the capacity to do that?
Yep, not a problem at all.
Okay, thanks.
We, we have the structure for it. We've been doing it for the whole pandemic.
Thanks, Aldo Bennett. Aldo Heck.
Thanks. I was just gonna add that there's the potential problem of, uh, a, a BCC deciding they want to meet in person and then they change their mind or they decide they, you know, they want to react to the fact that people didn't come. So now they want to be virtual. And I guess I would want some parameters so that both committee members and staff have some predictability. So whatever, however that has worked out, that, you know, you can't change your mind, you know, every week or even every month. Thanks.
So that's an excellent point, Aldo Heck. And I would suggest that, that what we're asking for people to do, for these BCCs to do is to, to choose their default state through the end of '21. And that, uh, if they wanted to change from that default state, so that there'd be two decisions, right? The first decision is if you want your default state to be virtual, nothing needs to be done. Right? If you want your default state to be in-person, then you have to have a vote of the body. That goes to council leadership and myself. We would make a decision. Um, and then if you, if any of them wanted to switch in the next six months, we would need, and I'm going to say, uh, at least two weeks notice to make that happen. I preferably a month. And, and my desire would be that if they wanted to switch, say, they, you know, June doesn't work for them or July, nobody shows up and they, they want to go back to virtual. Um, that they would have to vote in July to go virtual in August. Right? That, so that, that there's a, an enough notice so staff can arrange the Zoom license or the meet, or the meeting room or whatever it would be, that, that there's enough notice to the members of the body and that there's enough notice to the public, um, so that we're not having this like, you know, a day or two before and we're switching venues. But Sarah, I think, has feelings about this also.
Thank you, Aldo Heck. Sarah.
Thank you, President Abbas, and thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't know if I have feelings. I just, I wanted to highlight, um, and I did skim over it in my presentation, that there is a registration component that, um, we have built out and that, that is going to need to be, uh, re-engineered if we're going to have both in-person meetings and virtual meetings. And that is totally fine, but we're going to need to have that time to do it. Staff on that team have, uh, voluntary time away that they need to take this summer as well as vacation time. So we are looking at a six-week timeline. I've already made notes and, and, um, their, uh, manager has let them know that they're going to be working on this. But it will be six weeks that, that we're going to need to get this completed. If you want to go back to the paper process and not use this, you can do that, but that's going to change everything. So I just want to remind you that we do need to, to work on that piece of the registration. Thank you.
Good point. All right. Really good discussion. Any, any other thought, comment, question? I don't see any hand raised optimistically. So thank you all for joining today and we will keep having that discussion, uh, regarding common com. Aldo Furman.
I'm sorry, the disadvantage of having a wireless headset was I was in the other room. Um, where, where, what's the next steps on deciding on council meetings? And so, I mean, obviously we, it looks like we have a direction for committees, um, but what are your thoughts, President Abbas?
Well, we have a really robust discussion. I will take that discussion. I will discuss with Aldo Martin and, uh, the mayor and we will bring that on the CCEC and have another discussion around future step. Thank you. All right. No more hand raised. All right. Thank you all for joining today. Uh, with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move adjournment.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Uh, thank you all and have a nice evening. Thank you.